Okay. I'd have everyone's attention, please. Can you hear me all right out there? We're all good, all right? Thank you all for coming. We actually, it hasn't rained during the day today. I don't think it hasn't today. We've got lots to. How many inches did we get yesterday? Two and a half, three?
Uh, not as much, but the other part we had. Did it five, I think? Thirty inches and a half.
One point nine four.
How fast, best is some soft tea? I know it's.
Eight inches per hour.
There's a reason why we're getting such rain. That there, there is a reason. We don't know what it is. All right. Yeah. If you would, please silence all your cell phones. Today, we're having a combined work session and call meeting for the YK board commissioners. We do have extra copies of our agenda that are on the podium. If you'd like to have one, we do have those readily available. So, when we get started, because we do have a lengthy agenda at the end of the meeting, we will be having an executive session, so once we adjourn, adjourn that section, I'll be asking everyone to excuse us, because we've got some matters in the executive session we have to go over. So, here we go. Let's get it started. First, we'll call this being the order. Number two, if you'll please rise, we recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have with us John Yarver with Truitt McCall, but also with the YK Ministerial Alliance. John, would you do the invocation for us, please?
Sure. Let's put it together. Father, we are grateful for your blessings. We're grateful for the land in which we live, the freedom we've just celebrated with the pledge, the freedom that's afforded us in this land, but we know that true freedom comes through Jesus Christ. For we know the truth, and the truth has set us free. And Father, we pray that in exercising that freedom, that even in these days, as we consider as a community, and as a state, and this primary directions that we'll be moving for the years to come, guide us, guide our land, continue to bless America. And even as we meet in the comfort and safety and security of the community in which we live, we remember those in Texas, the families that are grieving, governments that are seeking to respond, we're grateful for the first responders there and the first responders here. We pray for our men and women in the armed forces as they protect our freedom, and we pray in all things that you might receive glory, not only in what we do, but the manner in which we do it. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
All right. Moving on to our agenda, this is item four. Consider adopted minutes of the following meetings. Number one, the April 25th, 2018 budget planning work session. Number two, the April 30th work session and call meeting. May 1st, we had a budget planning work session, and then on May 17th, 2018, we had a call meeting. Gentlemen, I hope you've had an opportunity to review those minutes. If so, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion.
Mr. Morice first.
Second.
Commissioner Goodyer second. Any discussion on the minutes or clarifications that need to be made? All right. Having none in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Uh, opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to new business, this gentleman's been tapped five in your book. Consider approval of jail use agreements with the city of Cleveland and the city of Helen before I get into anything. Sheriff Walden, I understand the right communication, that you're good with the agreements with the city of Cleveland and the city of Helen?
Yes, sir. We've done them worked out, so I think we're good this time.
I did have that. Now, folks realize this is a combined work session and call, call meeting. What we normally do, we have a work session normally the last Monday of the month, but because next week is Memorial Day, we're doing a combined meeting so we can able to take care of all the matters pretty much at one time, we hope. So, we're going to be asked a few questions on each of these items. I have a question in particular for staff or Sheriff Walden, and it goes back to something you and I discussed the other day under item seven, and this goes for both the city of Cleveland and the city of Helen. It says, "The city employees or officials shall communicate to the county's jails intake officers any knowledge of medical illness, unusual behavior, suicidal tendencies, or expressions, or anything out of the ordinary with detainee." You know, we were talking the other day, you know, our jails have become kind of a, for lack of a better word, a, we have a lot of mental illness, mental illness. Do you feel comfortable that this covers enough? I know mental illness is unfortunately a growing problem in our society. Are you comfortable with this? I just want to ask.
Yeah. Based on our contract, they're, they know coming in, they're responsible for any medical, and that is, mental health is medical. So, yeah, I'm comfortable with that. If not, I'll call them, tell them to come and get them.
Gentlemen, have you other questions or comments? All right. Having none, gentlemen, you've got, we've got the item in front of us. Do I have a motion to approve the jail use agreements with the cities of Cleveland and Helen as presented? Commissioner Wright first. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Commissioner Goodyer second. Any other discussion in the motion? Okay. Having none in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Uh, opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item six, consider approval of resolution, a resolution, excuse me, supporting Truitt McConnell University's request to reduce the posted speed limit from 45 miles an hour, 35 miles an hour in proximity to their campus on Georgia Highway 115, which is East Kyle Street here in Cleveland. That's tab number six. We have with us Mr. Yarverl from Truitt. John, you'll give a, just a brief synopsis. It's pretty straightforward. The city of Cleveland's already adopted this.
It is straightforward. It's just now with our new acquisitions of property and our growth, we're over 2,600 students this spring with enrollment. We now have eight points of egress, egress in the period of time, of the space that we're talking about here. The speed limit now begins right at where the Cleveland Worship Center was. It reduces to 35. We're asking to move that back to where you would go into our athletic complex and start 35 miles an hour there. Talked to Chief of Police, talked with the sheriff, and of course, the city's approved it, and we ask your careful consideration. Thank you.
Folks, this is pretty straightforward. I know, because most folks, I grew up right there, close in this area, and I know when I'm, when I'm my mom and dad's old house, you got a gun. I mean, this, Sheriff don't lock me up for saying that, but it's really, 115 has become a, people are flying down that road. I know that's in the city limits, Sheriff. I understand that, but I understand why Truitt is requesting this. I'd like to see us support their request to GDOT. At the end of the day, this is going to be GDOT's final say in the state of Georgia, but we want to support Truitt with all we can for safety purposes.
And since Senator Gooch has already agreed to, if you pass this, he'll take the resolutions to DOT for us.
Mr. Goodyer first. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hoffman second. Any other discussion? John, real quick, did you jump at a time frame at what you're going to be sending as soon as possible, preferably by this fall?
Yes, we're hopeful by this fall that the DOT will be able to add. And also, just to add, for the community, we're doing many more community activities, and that's put the community traffic on our campus, so all of this together makes this a necessary move for us.
Well, our, our hope is that GDOT will be more receptive to this, as we have tried to work with city of Cleveland, like Taco Bell and Walmart, to get that from 55 to 45, just that little section. So, we're going, hopefully they'll be receptive to this request and they'll work, they'll work that one, work that one. Closed discussion. Motion second. All in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Uh, opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, we appreciate our relationship with Truitt. We appreciate, I know you guys are growing, but also the leadership you guys are showing within our community and the sharing with Dr. Cantor, the leadership. We're awfully glad you guys are a part of the community, but the friendships we have and the difference you're making in our community and to the students' lives. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item seven, consider renewal, and I know we've got folks here with mountain biking, what I can pronounce that, I'm sorry, Sorba Mountain Biking. Okay. Y'all come up here and do this a few times, and see how many times y'all have done it. Okay. Consider renewal of the memorandum of understanding with the International Mountain Biking, Bicycle Association, Southern Off-Road Bicycle Associations, IMBA in Sorba. Consider approval of the Sorba Trails grant application and discuss the status of the Young Preserved Trails project.
That's a big one, isn't it?
Yeah, that's a mouthful. All right. You got the deal. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and esteemed board members, I want to first thank y'all for all y'all's support, y'all giving this project going forward. It's been a long road, and it, but it's a great example of what a volunteer organization and county government can do to, when they work together. I got a couple of items I want to talk to y'all about. One, a couple of them are laundry items, just the request to re-sign our MOU. It's, we're not changing any of the verbiage in it. Basically, as a recap, the MOU just allows us as a volunteer organization to seek funding to bring the trail system to Young Preserve with the county acting as government oversight of that, and also conduit for funds if we get funds through RTP or means that need a government organization to, to serve as conduit for that. So, we haven't changed any of the verbiage. We just had noticed in housekeeping that our old MOU had expired between us and the county, and to allow us for seeking grants, we need that active MOU in place, so I would respectfully request that y'all.
I'll tell you what, let's do this. We're going to take care of each one of these items as we go, if that's okay with you guys. Mr. Milton, Ms. Shannon, you guys had an opportunity to review the continuation of the MOU. I did pick up a few things. We got to change some addresses, because it's still in first, the old courthouse is our address. I picked up on that. Are you guys fine with the?
Yes, the body of the MOU is fine, it's true.
Gentlemen, you have any questions? With that, guys, I'm going to ask the motion to renew the MOU with IMBA in Sorba. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Commissioner Hoffman first.
Second.
Mr. Goodyer second. Discussion? All right. Having none in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Uh, opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right. Next, let's move on to the grant application.
Thank you. The grant application we're applying for actually requires a MOU, so thank y'all for passing that. That would have been a moot point otherwise. We are seeking funding from the Georgia Department of Economic Development, the tourism grant, seeking a grant of $5,000, and that is a similar grant to RTP where a government agency needs to be the conduit for the funds. Nonprofit can apply for it, but it does have to have a county conduit. That's part of the grant application. So, if y'all agree to be the conduit for that, we will continue work on that application. We gave y'all a copy of the grant application in process to give you an idea of what we're doing on that. We have a timeline of June, beginning of June, June 28th, I believe, to have that application completed and submitted, but before we stay, we'll work on it. We just need y'all's approval to, to serve as the conduit and have a county signature on that grant application.
One thing to keep in mind, guys, as we, as we, as after motion, Sorba's been great at providing the in-kind, I call boots on the ground sweat equity in the project, so. So, this is a $10,000 grant, correct?
Correct. Yes, it is a $10,000. I said five earlier, but you guessed it.
I actually read this.
Thanks for fact checking.
What a concept. Sorry, that's rude, but take it, take it off YouTube, please. Okay, moving on. Guys, you have any questions on that? I have the motion to approve the application for grant request, $10,000.
I make the motion, I'm praying.
Commissioner Goodyer first. Also, Commissioner Hoffman second. Discussion?
This $10,000 grant, it's just, it's just for what?
This will be used for, since we did not get the RTP grant this last cycle that we requested, we are looking at figuring out ways to move construction forward. This will be used for new construction on part of some of the trails that were applied for phase three.
You didn't get that last, the third phase grant?
No.
One thing, and while we're in discussion, I know we've had to move some boundaries regarding phase three. Some things are in motion. You know, we're trying to balance out the, you know, the drug task force location, and I won't say that out loud for group. It moves us as a board to figure out how we are going to securely create a boundary, you know, not only there, but just, we'll get that, that's going to be the next, the third thing we're going to talk about. Mr. Milton, have you guys had any discussions about with the drug task force?
We have.
Putting up a 10-foot high fence or 8-foot?
I've talked to Commander Posey about that, and we, we need to take a look at some sort of permanent barrier, I think, around the facility. And he seemed amenable to that. We just had a brief conversation.
Just as inside, we did adjust our boundaries down based on guidelines from, from y'all and from Mr. Milton. So, y'all basically gave us a no-fly zone on the map, and we respected that and adjusted our, our phases.
The most recent, y'all give me a copy, give me, I have a most recent copy. Give me a copy of that, number, phase three proposal. I don't have it here readily.
I think you have, you have reworked that yet.
Well, I've got the, I do have a, I have a document that I can send you that does show what was flagged on the ground, and it shows the line that y'all requested, and that the trails are, proposed trails are below that line, but yeah, I've got, I've got access to go, and I can send it to you.
Yeah, if you would, please, so we can start looking at it over the coming weeks.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, discussion. Will you be able to use the grant toward any improvements that base, to trail wanted to?
No, those are basically complete.
I've been through, but I don't know if you could use any of those funds could be utilized toward, if there's anything you find, oh, I wish we'd have done this, or we should have, you know, I'm just asking, I haven't seen anything.
The, the nature of some of these grants don't require specifics, so we could technically take that and come in, you know, as we're raising funds outside of RTP. RTP is extremely specific about what you use the funds for, and takes, like, some of these other grants that we're applying for, community grants, private grants, don't really have any constraints other than we use it on the trail system. So, yes, we could technically do that. What we're, what we're trying to do is move forward and construct more and more of the trail system outside of RTP.
And that doesn't change my decision. I'm just asking the question, how that can be used.
So, some of them don't have constraints, so we can use it for whatever we need to.
Commissioner, can I add something?
Yes.
This particular grant is through the state tourism. They do not allow for the grant money to use on any projects that were completed before the grant application. So, technically, you probably, we're either off staying with phase three, new construction instead of previous construction, because it's, pretty clearly, you can't use it on anything that's already been done before the grant application.
That takes care of that.
Okay.
We know what we're going to do with the money. All right. Any discussion, guys? All right. Closed discussion. Got a first and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Uh, opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next, before we move forward, I know we've got some folks here with the, I hate to say kids, but kids, the biking program. Raise your hand if you participate in that program. Are y'all ready to get going?
Yes.
Getting ready to get going?
Yes.
I have to. And just, I'm as frustrated as you guys are, so I will say that for the record. But having said that, let's, we're going to see if we can get some things moving here. All right, go ahead.
Well, that's the next point that I wanted to talk to y'all about. I've had several meetings with Mr. Milton and Mr. Sell. We've had some meetings going over the punch list that the insurance underwriters came up with, and we've addressed those issues, I believe, satisfactorily. And I know y'all are probably as tired as I am of answering the question, when I get asked more than once a day as a project coordinator for this project. People think I'm the one who holds the keys to the gate, and so. So, I'm here to request a date for a soft opening. Phase one and phase two are complete. The signage has been put out on the property. We've actually been doing volunteer work, going out and cleaning the deadfall debris that has accumulated since December. Trails are in good shape. The county has gotten the parking lot in a gravel-ready state and the road going in, and I think they're probably about through with the boat launch road unless the rain just washed them all away this week. So, we would like to respectfully request a date for a soft opening. June 2nd is National Trails Day. That's a Saturday. You know, I think that would be a great day to have open access to the property, but...
Well, we're going to try to get that settled here in just a few minutes.
Okay.
All right. I've got a few questions. Mr. Milton, I don't know if the rest of the board has this list items. Where are we on the fencing across the spillway?
It will be done before June 2nd.
Okay.
Already been ordered, and will be done before June 2nd.
Okay. Have you seen that?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
But that may be my fault that I haven't saw. I might be behind on my email. It's very easy to do. I didn't, I didn't email you, Commissioner. I just, I had emailed the chairman, asked him earlier about the fencing, and I sent him an email. I did talk to the, I did talk to the engineers who've done the EAP on the project. They were a little, that was one of their concerns, which, and it should, it should be one of their concerns, and I think it was one of the insurance concerns also. And the other concern was the trail coming down. You go across the dam to come down the face of the dam in front of spillway and back up the face of the dam. They didn't, they didn't say no, but they frowned a little bit about it as the erosion part on the face of the dam that, you know, with a lot of activity that's good. So, Chris called me today, and Chris, I apologize, it's just been pandemonium all the way around lately, so I couldn't, I tried to call you back, but that was pretty much one time. I said, I had one little shot, and that was it. But I'd be glad to meet with you out there, and we'll look at what we think we can do out there to satisfy those people, just to make sure that we're not creating any kind of erosion problems on the face of that dam, so.
We did.
See if we've got any options.
We did adjust the angle of attack, at least coming from the parking lot side. It comes out below, so people are not going to be coming down and around. It just has a straight line out below the spillway, and then we do have to get up on top of the spillway and the other side.
So, that's, that's something we probably need to talk about. We probably need to go out and look and see what we need to do, because the water authority is the caretaker of that damn well responsible for it.
I'm a man of the eye.
But, okay, just, let's get together here in a few minutes and set up a plan. I'll be glad to look anytime we can. I'm pretty open for the rest of the week, so I'll be more glad to go out and play.
Do you think you can meet next week or so?
Well, I can meet, as far as I go, I could probably meet tomorrow or Wednesday if this works, if need, if need. My intention was, and I had promised Chris that we would meet today, but it just, it just didn't work out. I was shorthanded, had some issues at work, so it just didn't work out today. Yeah, I'll be glad to.
All right, so we can have that possibility this week.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we can settle it soon. We're looking.
All right, that is one of my questions. Let's see here. All right, you answered my question about the TAF Act on the undergrowth of trails. You guys already working on that. Trail signage?
In place.
In place.
The only thing we don't have in place, there's a couple of informational kiosks that will have a trail map.
In the very front.
Yeah, well, at some of the intersections throughout. There's one on phase one at the central hub, basically a U R here and show where the other trails go. We've got those signs already made. We're waiting on Owens welding to build the actual metal kiosks that we'll install. Those maps, I'm not sure when they're going to have those constructed for us, but there'll be a, trailhead map. The signs, there are signs at all the intersections, EMS extraction points. The trail is completely signed, but just those information kiosks are not installed on phase two yet.
It's not, you guys, the canopy over the front gate?
Mm-hmm.
I was up there Thursday, we still hadn't installed that. Have you heard anything?
The last, the last thing I got was an email from Kevin at Owens, and he said it would be done before June 2nd. So, correction, I did, I did send everybody this list, and I just, that I just.
He indicated that he would, he just needed to cut the letters and put on there, but I don't know. That's, when I talked to him back in February, I thought it was finished.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we talked about the master map. Well, actually, we need to get a, make sure we get a master map to 911 Emergency Management as well as Sheriff's, or we need to make sure that's readily available for, for badly per happening emergencies. We need to make sure, you follow what I'm going, but I'm trying to think.
Sheriff, we're developing an emergency extraction plan, and that's, that's part of the signage requirement that we did. Every intersection, the trail crosses over the secure access road is, got a numerical and alphabetical code on it, and that's like 108 is the first section, 100B is the second section. And we're sharing that extraction plan with DMS and working and developing, so if they get a call from 911 and somebody says, hey, I'm at this point, the responders will know where to route help to and which gate to come in and that sort of stuff.
All right. Before we do a soft opening, we need to have that to, David, your department needs to be online.
Yeah, I need to be aware of that. I haven't received that information.
I haven't received any, any of the authorities. Okay. All right. Here we are, we're getting there, we're making, we're making sauce now. All right.
I believe, I believe Mr. Vern's was working on it.
Yes, I've, I've got that information, I'll send it out.
Okay, all right. So, I'd love for you guys to review it, and also Sheriff Walden and I had a conversation, not doing this, please, it's the emergency side of things, is, you know, security, opening and closing. I know we're getting to the weeks here, folks, we've got, we've got to do this, so. All right, we open it up, you know, number one, who's in charge, opening and locking the gate? How do we go about notifying, you know, emergency manager or Sheriff's Department? We are going to have, we're open, I'm going to say Friday, Saturday, Sunday. You see where I'm going here? What's our process? Do we know?
Well, since it's ultimately county property, you know, I think that's probably county employees. I know that there's not a, it's not a position that's been created yet.
We will coordinate that with Sorba. We will handle the opening and closing. It's just a moment, we're talking about Trail Days. The Trail Days come at an early in the morning.
We have a lot to do.
We, we have a, we have a, we have a... We will have, we will have some opening projects, but we'd like you to second to it. Right now, we're just talking about one day, we're talking about June 2nd initially for a soft opening.
Just that Saturday.
That's right.
Okay. I'll be selfish here, because I'm, I'm gonna change hats, I'm gonna sit on the bike with you guys. Is, once you, once we open it up, we've gotta get prepared to either start doing it every Saturday, you know, at least, I'm thinking out loud here.
I was asking, yeah, him, I said, he was like, he's excited.
I'm just thinking, I'm serious. Y'all are anxious to go. I, I know that. I am too. I'll be hiking tomorrow, we'll be biking. My elbows can't take my ass while I sit there, but...
We're just glad you guys figured out where if somebody gets hurt, so the chairman can ride out there, well, they can find him.
There is good cell service out there. Someone will stumble across it.
You know, just not, nothing here is really a big item that can't be done in a few days if everybody would do something.
That's the thing.
We're talking about it, yeah.
It could all be done by Friday if it's, if everybody would do something.
Can we do, can, can we legitimately do this by June 2nd, or do we need to safely say June 9th?
We're, we're fine for June 2nd, Sheriff. Signs will be here Wednesday, chain link fence will be up. We've got an handle.
Slang was the last word.
Trust me, we're, we're here to help.
You don't know the answer to the questions that haven't been asked yet, so...
Yeah, I'm, I'm sitting here, I'm thinking a lot, because these questions won't come up, and I'd rather us ask those today and then with June 2nd, and that's, we, we've got one chance to make a good impression. Porta potties.
They're already there. Two of them, so.
Now, we've got one of them. Have they moved it? It was down on the other side, one toward the thing.
It'll be, it'll be, it'll be located, it'll be located.
That's what I'm doing, I've been out there enough, I kinda, I, I know a few things, so...
Let me ask you this, Mike. Do I need to coordinate with my people to get a cable across the road to keep people from going on through the parking lot?
There's a gate there.
We already installed a gate.
There's already a gate installed.
Yeah, it's there.
My question is, do I have a key to that gate?
There's not a lock on the turn, but...
Yeah, you're, you're wanting to get, and that's one thing I don't wanna see, is ever Tom, Dick and Harry having a key to that, right?
No, it's a combination. It's 3, 7, 16, 42.
Roger, you better delete that off YouTube.
Well...
That's just between you and me.
3, 7, 16. How long are we going for?
Just put some mail that's lying on there.
We laughed about that, but it's true. We're gonna get full calls, cause people fishing, you know, our people, Water Authority, all y'all, you know, it's, it's open now, so, it's a concern.
And that's one thing, we're open as for hiking and biking, we're not opening up the lake yet.
I know, but I'm saying, you know, it just starts out.
Fishing, fishing.
Everybody's got a friend.
Yeah, everybody's got a friend.
Well, it's a different world now since the safe dams people have spoken and there's new state laws concerning all the dams now, so we're having to, we're having to jump through some hoops. We have to get engineers every two years to inspect, and, and I have to do a physical inspection every ninety days, I myself want to fill out and get to the EPD and the safe dams folks, so there is some stuff that has to be done routinely out there.
How about, were the Pan trees, that Pan ticket, there was a, you could drive a truck through there? I'll say, is you going backwards at DOT Barn?
The county put a bunch of field dirt up there.
Okay, 'cause I, I haven't been there since, since Thursday, so that may have gotten in, okay. All right, good. All right. All hearts, minds, ears clear?
I'm gonna give it myself on number four, he gets it.
All right, they, I think the Haversham put a, put a meter in, in one Thursday or something up there, directed for addicts.
All right. All right, well, we lack...
So if only the trails are open and we're not opening the lake?
Correct.
Do we have something that's posting that, or how would people know the lake's not open?
Yeah, 'cause liability comes...
I guess you'll miss process.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna have signage for no swimming and so forth on the way.
No swimming, no fishing?
Well, we can, we can post no fishing signs, but...
We're not prepared. We are not prepared.
We'll post, we'll post no fishing signs as well.
Guys, you're agreeing with that, we're not prepared.
Yeah, we're not prepared for that place.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We're gonna be, maybe education to the community out there that the additional traffic is gonna incur on most roads out there. You know, I haven't got to so many people, I can't put one out there full-time.
Right.
So might wanna educate the general public that things fixing the open out there and you're gonna see an influx of traffic, and, you know, I see it happen all over the county.
We haven't stopped, and I don't, we haven't stopped signs coming out the... Oh, okay, there will be. Okay. I didn't think I'd see that. All right, is there anything else we can beat to ground? Now, we're talking about the students, what kind of timeframe, what times, eight to three, eight to four, nine to three, nine to four? What you got in mind?
Well, we haven't worked that out yet.
Great.
But it's usually morning to sunset, but I don't wanna ask for that on the first day. I think maybe eight to five would be...
Let's go with eight to five. I think that would forbid somebody gets off the trail and is not familiar and they get lost and you have to call. And emergency management, send somebody out there. We get it all the time on Yona Mountain, on Horse Range, you name it, we're sending people, emergency responders. All right, so Saturday, June 2nd, from eight to five. Now, do we want us to do Saturdays for the next period of time? Are y'all looking for that?
I was gonna ask for more than that.
You think it said Friday, Saturday, Sunday? I read. I've been waiting for somebody else to bring it up, and nobody's bringing it up, so...
Well, I was gonna ask Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. But the reason I ask for Thursday, the White County Warrior Mountain Bike Team, which is a composite team of the high school and the middle school, which we have a lot of students here today, they practice on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They start July with their season for practicing, and they would request access to the trails to practice on outside of the opening dates. And they also have their own insurance, and they'd be happy to provide the county with that as an additional insurer. That's part of the NICA team, National Interscaliate Cyclone Association.
Have you gotten Mr. Melton or Ms. Shannon?
They would be happy to provide that. So they are requesting access to use it as a training facility. There is no current suitable area for them to train on during the week in the county.
I've heard about that. A few times.
Let me ask you one thing, old men out there on Saturdays and, which is outside the timeframe of our, our staff. So how, how, how we gonna have that? Is it, you know, we'll be outside the timeframe of our normal...
I understand.
We'll have to have somebody work, sir.
Do you bottom on?
Does it at least open well?
I don't have a problem with it, I'm just, I'm saying, I think, I mean, we know that eventually we're gonna have someone that's gonna have to be over there to more or less manage that, that, that part of the park, that part of the open lane, so...
Well, Keith can open it. If we do Thursday, Friday, Keith can open it because he's gonna be, he's on staff anyway Monday and Friday out there, so...
We'll work it out. It's his personnel schedule.
Okay.
Travis? None of my business, but you were talking about the lake out there and not allowing fishing and stuff, and I don't fish. But I can tell you right now, if you all believe that first time they catch some giant fish out there because it really hasn't been fished much, that there's not gonna be a ton of people out there since they're already talking about it, people are, then you believe that there's a little patch of unicorns out there that we need to take care of too, because it's just gonna open up.
We understand that, but officially, we're not ready. I'm just gonna be...
Well, I know that. That's what I'm saying, but it's gonna happen.
Words already out, sir.
We're not, we're not eager to that fact.
Oh, I know, I know.
They're not saying there's not gonna be access to it, just not this...
Yeah.
I mean, it's bad when the gang lord calls your personal cell number and tells you, please tell everybody to quit coming fishing.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, do you want, first of all, if the decision's here, do we want us to open up on a, do a soft opening on June 2nd, or postpone that to June 7th at night? To give an extra week, or, and if so, then do we go to open up at what point, Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Well, it sounds to me like staff's ready for a soft opening on the 2nd, so let the staff prove themselves and see, so we'll see after that, and then I, I mean, I don't have a, I'm not, I think if we're gonna do this, we need to make sure that we start thinking about this second phase of this thing as, as letting people in there and, you know, the fact that no more ride boats, you know, no swimming and stuff like that, that eliminates much of the liabilities we can on that, so...
Okay, I'll get this, we're gonna do this at the bottom of the motion. What do you foresee wanting to do on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, if we do this, soft opening on June 2nd?
I'm like, I'm gonna look, do, I could, but June 2nd?
I don't wanna seem to be greedy, but I think it's time. I would like to say, I would like to say we have a soft opening on the 2nd and then the following week.
The Sabbath, June 7th, which is Thursday?
Seven, yeah.
So every, you're talking about like...
Every weekend. I don't think...
Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Yes.
Do we tell them?
I, I'm of the same mindset as Mr. Turner, that I don't believe you can open Pandora and Fox and shut it down.
Okay.
Again, well, just that, because you know how thin we are now, and every time, we need more people, which we talked about this last year.
Yep.
We probably want to hire somebody, which only we have, you know, talking about the parts that are...
So we're in the middle of our budget.
Exactly. We ain't figured anything new, yes.
All right. We did hire one, one of the parts, one area.
Okay. All right. All right. Commissioner Nix, can I help you out with your motion? A soft opening on June 2nd?
Start in June 7th?
In June 7th.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, for the next period of time. That'll be the opening from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. those days.
So move.
I got a motion to add, sir. All right, second. Any other discussion?
What about holidays? Life is life work, I can have this Monday.
Why'd you come, boy?
I'm the water son. I hate being a wheel, I'm not a wheel, I mean, we're really a lot short, but not over, I mean, for no one that right now.
I mean, there might be future holiday use, but right now, we're not prepared to jump into it.
Okay. All right.
Well, I think that, you know, we probably could go with this schedule through the, tentatively through the end of June, and at our next meeting, maybe we can work some more details out.
Revisit it. Revisit it. Because we're gonna be meeting June, meeting June 11th and June 12th.
I mean, I, I think we just set a tentative schedule for June right here, and then we'll, we'll work on that other schedule some more.
Okay. We'll look at it again in the middle of June. Any other discussion? All right. I have none in favor of the motion, signal if I say a no. I oppose, say no. Motion carries. Breathe. I can just...
Give me a call more sometime.
Now, before we move on to the next item, because we've, again, gotta link the agenda. While you guys, I've gotta say this, while you guys are biking, realize there should be folks hiking, so we just all work together, please.
So don't run over it.
We're all mountain bikers, at least this group, but they were designed for multi-use, so, you know...
Scare somebody, oh, you got a stretcher on the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanna, if y'all don't have any more questions for me?
We're done.
I would thank you for y'all's support of this project ongoing. We continue to do what we said we would try to do and run twenty miles plus from our own trails to this county. And it takes a village, you know, and super to work with, and we look forward to the continued support. And I don't think y'all have been quite prepared for what kind of economic impact this is gonna have on our community.
One thing, and without that staff to come back at a later meeting, not today, we've talked about, you know, for our local citizens, White County citizens, you know, that, you know, we're not so charged right now, hear me? But our tourists are coming in, utilizing our facilities, a way to at least have either a parking fee, so...
The insurance company is relevant in the OP situation. Because once you start charging fees, you're more likely...
If they fall on banana peel, they're gonna sue you anyway.
What does that all, parks and...
I, I don't understand that. All right, help me out here. Open, open the floor for a second. My, it's my pleasure here. Will you guys go to other meetings?
That's Premier Mark Benning.
What, what happens? How do you, they charge a fee? How does that happen? Go ahead.
Depends on the location. The Chickapie Woods facility's in Hall County, because of the nature center and the golf course, they've, they've had some access and some other illegal activity going down in there because of the, just that road where it is. So they put in a gate and they've started charging a fee to pay for security. The facility that's just over the state line in North Carolina, Jack Rabbit, that we like to visit, it's, it's, it's free, it's, there is no fee there. Bull Mountain, Jake Mountain over on, over in Lumpkin County, those are free, no, no parking fee.
Do they close it up in the evening?
No, sir. Those are, those are available at your leisure, and those are, those are actually hiking, biking and horse trails over and, over out that way, Bull and Jake on your way there.
So you know, our agreement with the state doesn't allow horseback?
Sure, just...
Just say that it allows everyone to be on it.
And just for your awareness of, of what we do with the, with the students and as almost all the facilities that we ride that are, that are available to us anywhere nearby are multi-use, so they are hiking and biking. So we do encounter joggers, runners, and a part of what we do in training the students and, and us as coaches and our, at every level, part of that is, is the education that comes with knowing how to ride appropriately on multi-use trails. So we have, that's part of our protocol in educating them. Every, every July when we begin to start, start coaching new students, that's part of, part of our etiquette, being ambassadors for the sport and raising, raising new athletes that they understand how to do that appropriately. So getting off the trail, moving out, out to the side, what is the, what is the standard decorum for mountain bikers? So that's, that's part of raising them to be good stewards as well.
Thank you. All right, let's, let's continue researching that item, 'cause I thought there's, there's a varying...
Steve Shields and both, Jodan Thompson and Steve Shields, both stressed to us the importance under state law for counties, particularly with the Recreational Properties Act, that once you charge, you come out from under that act, you certainly can do it, but you come out from under that protection of that act. And both said that anyone would be happy to come and speak with the board and explain the legalities of that if you, if you so wanted.
Yeah, we'll pick that up later, and we, we'll talk about that and schedule that. Just Sorba, or all you guys, Chris, I can't name everybody in the room. Thank y'all. Disorder, or all you guys, Chris, and I can't hear anybody in the room, thank y'all. And I know this has been kind of painstaking, but this is, this thousand acres has so much potential for our entire community. And not just for what we do currently, but what we do in the future for tourism, ball fields, I mean, this thing is just phenomenal. We're, we're about to become a drawing card for upstate Georgia and southeast. I feel strongly about that. So, thank you all, and I mean that. And feel free to hang out for the next hour and a half, good luck. But if you do have to leave, if you would leave quietly, please, I, I appreciate it. Because we've got a long list of items we still have to go through. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay. Uh, moving on to item eight, consider approval of grant application and memorandum of understanding for the White County Chamber of Commerce's funding request for fast forward outdoor adventure tourism product development grant. It's ironic, we're talking about this, we probably should have had that first before we, uh, this is the same grant, Jillin, that we, uh, we were the conduit for the chamber last year. Uh, it was not approved last year, the chamber has asked to, uh, apply again to the Georgia Department of Economic Development Tourism Division. Um, so, we're just the conduit and Matt, do you want to take a split second and kind of.
Sure, obviously, for having, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is the same grant application that you helped us with earlier. Uh, we failed to get that grant, so we revisited, asked the committee to tell us where we failed. And so, they gave us those recommendations very quickly, we addressed all those, and this is a, a second run at that. We're proposing that you're gonna make your money back in sales tax on support of things like Yona Preserve and the zip lines and all those things. So, that's how we're proposing, instead of parking fees, that you can make your money back on this.
I'll keep it short, sweet and simple, a motion to approve the grant application. Mr. Hoffman first. Mr. Ryan second, any other discussion? Have you done on favors, motion speaking of I? Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Back to item seven. Did we vote on that? We did, we got, we got.
Nick stood your unanimous.
Okay, great. We got so many different discussions there, I, I lost, I lost sight. Alright, item nine, review the current contract with advanced disposal that operates the White County Transfer Station. Jillin, I had asked, uh, Mr. Melton to get us a copy of the contract. Uh, I'll just be candid, uh, we all were receiving comments and, I believe we all are, comments and or complaints, uh, regarding, uh, the transfer station and the state that it's in. Mr. Melton, would you feel free to elaborate a little bit about what we found the other day?
Mr. Chairman, we've had, uh, we've had a number of complaints about the transfer station, about the cleanliness of the transfer station, maintenance down here, the floor not being cleaned in timely fashion, the, the blown trash, the metal on the ground, just various things. Uh, I've done a number of inspections down here. That you and I went down there one day and it was in pretty bad shape. Uh, either John or Harry goes down here on a daily basis and checks it. And, uh, some days it's okay, some days it's not okay. Uh, I spoke into the manager with advanced disposal and, uh, he was supposed to be here tonight, I do not see him. So, I don't know where they're at.
Is, is it correct that Advance is subletting, or subcontracting out to another company?
They are. They're subcontracting out the, uh, the operation down there to another company. And, uh, spoken with them as well, but we don't have any, we don't have any authority on that. It's up to advanced disposal. What about the restaurant that Advance proposed building down there three years ago? They, they completed it. They completed it. But, uh, just the, uh, just the overall operation, I don't think is satisfactory.
I'm not putting up harm, but it is done.
But it used to not look this bad, I mean.
I know that, we're taking it more than we ever.
Correct.
And, you know, again, I'm not putting up for them, I'm just saying, you, I know it's not every day, but I don't feel they're getting down what to do, what comes in down there.
Well, apparently, we're giving them a pretty good bite down there if they're subbing, subcontracting out somebody else to do it.
I know what it's costing before we took it and put it in somebody else's hands, what we were running fifteen, well, you do too, fifteen more years ago.
Well, I'm gonna say it is, we've got a contractor that is contracted to run it for, so we must be paying pretty good if these able to turn it off.
Oh, that's what I'm saying.
Hopefully, money in garbage. Well, regardless of who has it, it just makes more attention.
Well, and for them not to show up, I'm sorry, this, this is, this, we can't get return phone calls, we can't get, uh, Mr. Melton's staff. Uh, Mr. Melton, please speak up here. Uh, you have difficulty getting, when you have, we have a problem, tell me about your communication, has it been challenging sometimes?
It's challenging sometimes to get a call back.
And you speaking what just, uh, was the other thing, you were all talking before you got.
Mr. Dorsey. Uh, and, and I did tell Mr. Dorsey that we were meeting on this tonight, anticipated to be here, but.
I guess you allow me to give my opinion, but.
Chair, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I went to check some trace down there a couple of weeks back, and I had to throw my lame shoes away when I got home. That was the nastiest, it was two inches deep slot down there. And the next time I go down there, I'm gonna dump mine out there where it's clean.
Are we in a binding agreement or living or two thousand and twenty?
It says we can terminate the agreement.
Nine months, it's gotta give ninety days.
Best way to get their attention is put it out for bids.
I think we're gonna have to check it again.
I agree with that.
So.
The negative part of the bid pack is how we expect the place to be built.
I think that, I think that when we put it out for bid, we ought to not allow, not allow subcontracting.
Yeah, I think there needs to be a clause in other, in the, in the contract that they can't sublease to somebody else.
Alright.
I don't think it's, well, sublease just look back the fashion point and part, but, I mean, Vance is still, again, and I'm not beating Vance to the ground, I'm not.
What we didn't have is problem when Bobby was running. Bobby took care of, he looked after the place and took care of Bobby's not.
They changed management. So, uh, when y'all like to make that form of motion, open the contract up.
You guys. I'm gonna go.
Okay. Second, have a motion of second, Commissioner Hoffman, I have Commissioner Nix and Commissioner Hoffman to open the contract for the transfer station, uh, of the bid. Uh, and staff, if you could, uh, bring, uh, let us take a look at the contract and bring updates so that we can put, uh, uh, verbiage that requires cleanup, well.
Well, we shouldn't have sent staff down there every day to take a look at things. We shouldn't have to go down there and deal with.
Any other discussion?
We just want.
We're bidding now.
We've just bid now.
Make it pretty common contract, if you can't sub it down and you gotta keep it clean.
What are you saying? The bid price is, I mean, I've been sitting for five years. We're not gonna take it, we still got to.
We're about, I know the roadway, one twenty-nine there, that's where we, we get a lot of complaints too, that we have a, a kind of, uh, say so in that contract.
I don't know how much trace we've been to pick up.
I don't think, I don't think it's primarily their haulers, uh.
Well, I don't. Yeah, I think it's a combination of both. It's definitely a combination of both.
Now, DOT and some of their defense, they have sent some crews on to clean up. I know we've had crews. We don't, and we, we're hesitant to start this, but it's a reflection upon White County.
I mean, that's the part, when you come into White County, that's about the first thing you find yourself. And when you see Walmart plastic bags laying on the side of the road with all the cups.
It's nasty.
That's right.
Alright, any other discussion? Have you done on the favor of the motion, speaking of I? Aye, folks say no, motion carries.
So, we'll retain the contract with Advance right now, but we're.
Open it up for bid.
Opening up, and then we'll decide what to do with them.
Yes. And they should have had someone here, yeah, just being real. Okay, alright. Item ten, Mr. Kevin Hamby, who's been itching to get up here, our SPOS manager, present the two thousand fourteen SPOS cash flow status and update.
Well.
Mr. Hamby.
We'll get through this pretty quick.